Call to order. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular board meeting with the Holton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and will be posted on the board's YouTube channel. We have guests tonight. Welcome to our guests. Welcome, Father Parent. And welcome to our meeting. Before we begin, I want to review some guidelines and some general comments and instructions before the meeting. In order to be recognized, please place, please use the handoff feature in teams to be automatically placed in queue. Please remember to turn your desk mics on when you speak and please silence your cell phones, which will ensure we are not hearing any feedback or causing interruptions during the meeting. And please remember that if you speak when you're not recognized or you do not have the flow, your mic will be muted. Our first item, item one point one, land acknowledgement, opening prayer, Our Father and the National Anthem. I please I R staff to start, I R staff to lead us with the land acknowledgement.
Holton, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and Mametee.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandaran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Mametee.
These lands surrounding you greatly.
Are steeped in indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty land.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
For direction.
Land.
Waters.
Plants.
And animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Director Clan, could you please lead us in the opening prayer, the Our Father and the National Anthem?
Okay, the opening prayer, um, this is the month of May and it's a month that has for generations been dedicated to Mary, our mother. So I'd like all of you to join me in the Hail Mary. In the Father and the Son, Holy Spirit. Amen. Hail Mary, full of grace, Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou amongst women. Blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, Mother of God, pray for us sinners now at the hour of our death. Amen. Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Amen. Yes, we have to, in the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Please it's not temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Amen.
Oh, Canada. Our home and native land. True nature love. In all of us, amen. With glory hearts we feast. We invite the true Lord, strong and free. From God and wide, oh, Canada. We stand on God for thee. What peace, what land. Glorious and free. Oh, Canada. We stand on God for thee. Oh, Canada. We stand on God for thee.
Motion arising from in camera, there were three motions from in camera session that will require a vote in the public session. For the first item, I've declared a conflict of interest and will hand the gavel to vice chair. My wife is employed with another school board and is an employee of another union. I declare a conflict on salary and bargaining items. I'll hand it over to the vice chair.
Uh, okay, uh, resolve that the Holton Catholic District School Board ratify the attached memorandum of settlement between the board and Q B three one six six zero zero clerical, technical, effective September the first, twenty twenty-two, and to expire August the thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. May I have a mover?
I'll move it.
Uh, thank you, trustee O'Herns Renata. May I have a seconder?
One second.
Okay, and there is no discussion on this item, so I'm going to take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Herns Renata?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew's in favor. Trustee Murphy? Trustee Saunders?
Abstain.
Trustee Kelly?
Abstain.
And trustee Duarte? Okay. Great, so the, um, motion carries.
Thank you, vice chair. Our next motion, uh, we had two personnel matter items. The first one is a personnel matter. I'll read the resolution. Can we have it on the screen? Resolve that the Holton Catholic District School Board adopt the in-camera personnel matter one. May I have a mover for this item? Looking for a mover. Trustee O'Herns Chenara moves, uh, trustee Powell moves. Looking for a seconder.
I'll second it.
Trustee O'Herns Chenara, there will be no discussion on this motion. We call the vote. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
Abstain.
Trustee Carabella?
Abstain.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Abstain.
Trustee O'Herns Chenara?
I'm in favor.
And trustee Duarte is in favor. We have five in favor, one opposed, one abstention. Motion carries. We have another matter, personal matter two. Which is on your screen now. And I'll read the motion. Resolve that the Holton Catholic District School Board adopt the in-camera personnel matter two. Uh, may I have a mover for this item? Trustee, uh, Agnew? Uh, looking for a seconder. Trustee Powell? There will be no discussion for this motion two, and I'll call the vote on this one. Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
Abstain.
Trustee Carabella?
Abstain.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Herns Chenara?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte is in favor. We have six in favor, one opposed, two abstention. Motion carries. We shall now move on to our next order of business, which is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions, additions or corrections to the agenda and do trustees want to remove any of the consent agenda items, uh, to the regular position? One second. Saying none, may I have a, saying none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
Trustee Kelly moves.
I can second Mr.
Seconded by trustee Agnew. I'll take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell? Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Herns Chenara?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
We have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention. Motion carries. The agenda is approved. Our next order of business is declarations of conflict of interest. I have declared an in-camera conflict of interest. Are there any further declarations of conflict of interest to be done out of camera? Trustee Kelly?
I declared one in.
In-camera declarations. Trustee Saunders, same. Trustee, yeah, so trustee Saunders and trustee Kelly declare an in-camera conflict of interest, which will be recorded. Our next order of business is presentations. Item four point one. Senior staff updates. Director Clan, please introduce the presentation.
I'll turn this over to Superintendent Dulcorno and his team. Take it away.
Thank you. Um, this evening, I'm very thrilled through you, Mr. Chair, um, to present to you the work that we've been doing at student success, particularly with skills pathways and the Shism program. And I'm not sure if we could call up the PowerPoint, Elizabeth? That's nice. Now I gotta do this. Is this all we have is the PowerPoint? We don't have the? Okay, the full thing is there? Okay, perfect. Thank you. As you can see, an overview of what we have is with the Holton Catholic District School Board, the skills pathways. We're really going to outline for you some of the pathways initiatives that we've been working on. The experiential learning overview that we've been working on, the pathways exploration and transition to secondary that we've been doing. We want to share with you how we've embedded our faith in the pathways learning, and that's the foundation upon all that we do. And then, of course, we're going to be exploring some of the pathways that we have opened up with apprenticeship, knowing that this is exactly where we are as a province in the need, particularly looking at the anterior youth apprenticeship program and the energies that we put in this year to really get going. And then looking at the skilled trade bursaries that we have already given out six, and we have another ten that we'll be giving out at mid-June, and we're really proud of these kids as well. Then we're going to end this presentation with a view of the specialist high skills major known as Shism. Um, what we're going to look at is how do we measure success of all of these programs in student success that actually speaks to student achievement and student engagement? So that this way here as a board, you're going to be seeing really how the work that we do in our school with our staff and our students is really embedded with the goal of achievement. Now, none of this would be possible if it wasn't for the outstanding, and I really need to underscore the outstanding leadership of the consultants. And that will be John Dietrich, who oversees the experiential pathways, and he does the dual credits, and he does, uh, a lot with our life skills class in terms of the pathway school we created for them as well. Then we have Judy Bridges, and Judy Bridges has joined the team, and you'll see the work that she has been doing to really lead and guide the O YAP and the apprenticeships so that our kids really start to make a sustainable living with a very, very good, um, salary while living their passions, their goals, and the dignity of their work that was God's plan. And then you're going to be ending the evening with, um, the Shisans with Mark Ives, who's overseen it and the success that we've had with that program as well. What I'm really excited about is that we've actually stood on the shoulders of those before us. And so we've built from those that were here before us, and particularly newly retired Kathy Jenkins, who really did an amazing amount of work for us to really take off and soar. So it's really the foundation upon her and Colin, uh, McGillicuddy, superintendent that I replaced as well. So really standing on their shoulders and what we were able to do to the next piece. Um, when we continue, you start looking at the next slide. It's like this is my Vanna. We're going to have this overview, uh, of it. So what you'll see right now is really a number of things that we have done. We're wanting to make sure that our pathway itinerants, and we have nine of them, and they are outstanding individuals who really work with our grades. We went back even another grade. Grade six, seven, and eights, and then they work with our cross-panel transitions into secondary teams. And we have served, for example, they are responsible to implement the requirements of the ministry document titled Creating Pathways to Success. So it's really allowing the kids to know how to use our faith to make sure that they live their God-given talents and their potential to hit whatever pathway goal that they have, and how are we going to structure their timetable to get to that goal? And so we wanted to ensure that all grade seven and eight students have an active individual pathways plan, which is IPP. So if you ever hear of an IPP, that's an individual pathways plan. The IPP is housed electronically in the student's My Blueprint. So they have it for their whole duration until they graduate. So the goal really is asking those really fundamental questions of what talents have you have? What passions do you have? How do you see that it, God's light within you? And how is it that you want to do to give back and serve in the community in terms of a career? And then we start to design backwards. This is the work of our itinerants who have served over four thousand nine hundred students approximately. And so we're looking at really doing a number of things. They also serve as caring adults by meeting with the grade seven and eight students, a minimum of two times per year to discuss their career and life planning. And they attend and they help and they plan. Of course, they support a number of different programs that we do. What I really want to focus on is they support a number of the transition courses that happen in cross-panel divisions between elementary and secondary. So they really work to bridge that gap and to work with the secondary, the family of schools, secondary school, to ensure that all grade eights have submitted their course options, know what the course options are, sits down with them, counsels them through the course options, and really start to diffuse any of the stress that they have and really start to build the excitement of seeing their future in high school. They also support mental health and gap closing by responding to student voice. So all of our itinerants have completed the assist mental health training and part one of equity and inclusion so that they can build that foundation for kids to live their dignity. Elizabeth? Thank you. The overview of experiential learning really speaks to what we have been doing in terms of the experiential room that's at Saint Joan of Arc. We have about five hundred grade six going in, and we're really looking at how do we start introducing to skilled trades and really those hands-on tools as well as other careers that they can start thinking about doing and have a number of different stations and work on their IPP while they're doing some exploration as well. What we've done is we also started last year, we've done, uh, an indigenous education outdoor, um, piece. And what that really is, is we looked at the Fazend curriculum, and we wanted to make sure that we start to embed indigenous ways of knowing, doing, and being. So what knowledge is it from our indigenous partners that we have in our community? And how might we leverage the elders to come and teach us about the harvest and using moons and using a number of different ways to plant seeds and really start to talk about why they're called the Three Sisters and which seed is planted first and how the dew creates its own watering system? And the kids started to really learn a lot about that while they also engage in indigenous sports. And so the indigenous elders taught them through that sport piece there. And then, of course, talking to the grandmother was talking about food and nutrition and what food and nutrition looks like and created a meal as well. So we wanted to make sure that we embedded all of this into the curriculum and from the curriculum into taking our indigenous ways of knowing, doing, and being. And those of you who were able to join us in the Indigenous Gala last week, you saw the success that it was with over two hundred guests and community members came out. And what we really wanted to do was honor the work of those teachers who are going to be looking at embedding indigenous ways of knowing, doing, and being in their curriculum and listening to the community where we had a chef talk about, um, their, you know, entrepreneurial skills moving into what they were able to do. So you're seeing that we're starting to introduce a number of that. We added from our outdoor education funding to the special education classes, and we reintroduced them to the light, let's go for fit, um, life skills classes where we bring them to a trainer, and the trainer works with kids to really develop that pathway to health and fitness. And we also did some training with taking the bus, like how to take that bus so that the kids are doing experiential learning through our life skills class. We created a lot of student voice because you know that the kids will tell us what's working, what's not working, and then we start to look at it. So from those, we took events for about four hundred students and that we continue to sponsor our life skills program with work, training, and materials. Excuse me, Elizabeth. And those are just in the pictures of our kids really, um, participating in some of the experiential learning. Elizabeth? Those are some of the pathway explorations that we've had for our kids. Something great things to think about here is like how we have kids who've actually gone to, um, uh, five teams were sent to the interior skills and they won silver medal with silver medals. We had one team that went to the national level and won a gold. So they became number one in Canada for architectural and design. So this is the type of work that our construction classes are doing with kids who are thinking of going into engineering or becoming architects and exploring in that and then competing. And so we go on. Elizabeth? These are some pictures of the pathways and the transition, particularly focusing on, and a few of you were able to attend the skills program, which is the first time we offered it. Again, looking at how do we bring skilled trades into the schools and have the kids compete of the teams of schools compete to really design and implement and do a task and then really make sure that the task is actually sustainable. So they have to endure a number of different weight tests and all that. So you can see how that was the first year that we've done that. And again, this was all the incredible work and leadership of our pathways itinerary. Elizabeth? Taking the notion of that it's embedded in our faith and pathways that we do, we want to know that we really do work from our faith theme of what does our Lord require or ask of us? And it's to do justice and to walk humbly with our God and then find that there is dignity in all work. And once we start to honor the pathway of all work, we're really taking God's plan and we're creating it. And so we're inspired by our God-given light. And so the idea really is how do we go about by constantly embedding our pathways into faith? Two examples I want to share with you is based on our sacramental classes that we have through the experiential room. Our grade sevens create two of these crosses. I feel like I'm doing show and tell right now. Two of these crosses. And these crosses, they make one for themselves when they do their confirmation, and they make another one for a buddy in grade two for their first communion. And then we ask them that they're encouraged or invited to bring that with them when they're having their sacrament of confirmation or first communion. And so this is ways for us to really allow people to serve others while they're also embedded in our faith in terms of the pathway learning. Elizabeth? What I'm really excited about is thinking about what we've done this year with our apprenticeship pathway, the guidance counselors experiential learning. We know that as a province, by twenty thirty-four, we're going to be in such a shortage of skilled trades to a detriment of twenty-four point eight billion dollars. And so we need to start to honor pathways that allow kids to see themselves in serving and living their passions. So how do we go about by building that capacity in our schools? Well, we start by really understanding skilled trades and apprenticeship as a post-secondary education pathway. So we teamed up with Leuna eight thirty-seven, and so all guidance counselors in high schools participated in a full day of skilled trades experiential learning and what we call trade education. And so trade education really was to make sure that the guidance counselors, uh, at their schools, education and career life planning teams, so that's E C L, those teams, they attended the Conestoga skilled trades event, and they started to really participate in understanding how to better have conversations with students to start to lead them to apprenticeships and skills pathways. And then, of course, that culminated into a professional development day with each guidance, a department receiving professional development in the fall. And again, we're looking to continue this to build capacity. What's come out of that, what we're looking at in terms of measuring is that when you're looking at O YAP or concentrated O YAP, which is a group of focus courses uh, that we have here in Holton Catholic, as of May tenth, we've seen a forty-four percent increase in our O YAP participants. So when we're measuring all that work that we're doing, all that planning that we're doing, all that thinking and leadership that we are doing, we're really doing it. We've had forty-four percent increase from previous years. We've had thirteen O YAP participants have signed registered training agreements, R T As, and have started their post-secondary education while they are in high school. So we've had thirteen of those. And if you see, I tweet like a fiend. I have always highlighted them. It is equivalent to a student who gets a scholarship. It's equivalent to a student who gets a, signed on to be on a football team at a university. It's equivalent to, um, a student who is honored for some of their passions or skills or achievements to have it. What I love, or these students did send me a few thank you cards or emails where they told me they used, um, a number of their work to help them apply for a bursary, and we'll get into that as well. And we've had three new concentrated O YAP programs this year, starting for September. And so we really worked at packaging it, looking at it, and say Francis Xavier has been exemplary with it with their chef and baker's concentrated O YAP. And really looking for kids who want to go into becoming a chef or a baker. We're looking at Notre Dame, who's doing the construction dual credit concentration program. And at Christ the King, we're looking at the skilled trades concentrated program, really focusing on technology and grade twelve math. If we go on to the bursary parts of our, um, uh, apprenticeship pathway, next slide, Elizabeth, sorry. What we're doing, uh, at the next slide. Thank you. You're having, we have sixteen of one thousand skilled trade bursaries that we're offering. And so far, we've given out six out of those sixteen, and the other ten will be given out mid-June. The beautiful thing about that is the kids must take a co-op this year in a skilled trade placement and demonstrate their leadership to the skilled trades. The emails that I've received from the students or the cards of thank you who have received a bursary speaks to how relieved they are that they used eight hundred of that thousand to buy the tools that they can now do in their pathway or if they go on to continue their apprenticeship. So a number of the kids are being set up for success right away because of what they're doing in high school. And again, this is all because of the co-op teachers. Those co-op teachers are really working with our consultants to move it forward. So every co-op teacher in our school deserves a big, you know, round of applause to really think about really promoting our kids and moving forward. Next slide, Elizabeth. So now we're going to say, okay, so how does this all translate into, what does it look like in terms of achievement? And this is where what we're really excited about is the specialist high skills major program. You know, there are nine sectors. We know that in that piece there, what we also have is forty of those programs are in, uh, Holton Catholic. Uh, offered this year, next year, which is new, and it's new ministry approved. And again, this is the leadership of Mark Ives, where the, we've, all the ones that we applied for. Usually you get two ones that are applied every year. We all, ten of ours got approved. So that's additional funding, but opportunities for our students to hit their passions and their goals. And you can see the schools on the list here and what they're doing and what they're offering as a specialist high skills major. And for some trust. And for some trustees that are new, the specialist high skills majors means it has to have programming for every pathway for us kids. So kids who are going into an ancient, sorry, a university pathway, kids who are going to a college pathway. Kids who are going to an apprenticeship pathway, kids who are going to the world of work pathway and kids who are going into the community pathway. So they have to have programming that involves to support all those kids who are getting a diploma. And so when you're looking at them, particularly the assumption they have. The emergency services focusing on first responders, which is first one that we have here. That really speaks to a knee and need for paramedics within our community and going forward. So if we go to the next slide. And this is what I really want to share with you as an overview, again, speaking about achievement. So the purpose of this analysis that I'm going to ask Elizabeth to share with us. Is to better understand the patterns of student achievement between Shism students and non-Shism students. So these are kids taking the exact same class, but one with the focus with experiential learning, which is. I'm taking the theories that I'm learning and I'm playing with them in design and creating. Versus kids who are taking the course and, you know, doing the final exams and everything else like they always do. But minus that experiential, minus that co-op placement, minus that opportunity to really work with outside partners. And those in the field. So it's those that really look about what would you do? We need to thank the research department, particular Dr. Nick Lombardo. Who really is a great partner for us to say, Nick, we want to start measuring. How these programs are really affecting our students' achievement so that we can really start to. Think about ways that we can support kids to get into their pathway when they're competing to go to university. In a very elite engineering program, but if they do a Shism, they have a leg up. And so this is really the work of the research department who put it all together for us. And what we looked at was we took data from our Power School Student Information System. This included data from twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three cohorts. So these are kids in cohorts. Remember that Shism starts in grade eleven and twelve. So it's only those two years. They start to do some thinking and working and planning in grade ten, hence the I P P. But it really is grade eleven and twelve. And that we have no identifiable identifiable data of students as present in this result. So you're not going to see names and you're not going to be able to recognize anyone. You're just going to see success in terms of achievement. So if we go to the Power B I report. Or the next slide? Okay, so here you see what we have is an overview. We have about nine hundred and forty nine students currently enrolled in the Shism. And you can see the Shism here in terms of um which school has how many students taking them. What you have is just another visual representation in terms of those squares and rectangles. Just to show you the size of kids population that are taking them. But that information again is also on the side there, but currently we have just. Fifty one students shy of a thousand students in our system who are really taking um uh Shism, a Shism program. The next slide talks about, and I really wanted to measure the success. So this is looking at students achievement. Yeah, I think you have to go to next slide. Yeah, there we go. So when you start looking at how we measured uh achievement here, you're going to be seeing what's blue. Are kids who are in the exact same course as a Shism kid, but they're not in a Shism program. They don't have the experiential learning component to it. They don't have the co-op placement to it to support it. What you notice in grade eleven, three percent did better academically in the pathways than students who weren't. And then you'll start to see in grade twelve, two percent did better in terms of averages uh when you go forward. The next bar chart here where it's average grades by course type. So you have the pathway of university. You can see the kids who were in the university pathway and taking a Shism scored two percent on average higher than other kids. Who were non. You have kids who are in an open class. And an open class means you can have college students and you can have university level students in it. They scored five percent more than students who um weren't in a Shism program. Kids who are in a workplace program scored three percent more or two percent more. And then you have kids in the college who scored three percent more on average. That speaks volumes to what experiential learning does. When you want to say, and again, this is the amazing research department that breaks this all down for us. They said, do you want to see it by course? We say, yeah, let's see it by course. Here you start to see again, every single Shism student achieved at a higher average than a non-Shism student. In the following courses that are there. And that shows you the success. Then if you want to see, but what are the average grades for Shism students by their actual Shism? You start to see how the high, the higher averages for kids who went into health and wellness. So these are kids that are looking to do either a medical, if they go to university profession. Or kids that are going into paramedics or kids that are going into being first responders, a number of different pathways for those kids. You can see that they were the ones who have achieved the most in that particular pathway uh going forward. Then when we look at, well, let's see how many credits are accumulated here. The average accumulation credits is that Shism students tend to take more courses than the other students, non-Shism students do. And that's simply because when they are taking co-op, that takes them out of the school into experiential learning. And it gives them an opportunity to really start to play with what they want to do. So they come back and say, I want to score and do a little bit more on this particular class that I didn't have room for. And this is where we really thank Merton, who offers co-op opportunities specifically designed for Shism students. And so Merton really allows them to honor their Shism requirements so that they can do it during the summertime. And I, that's it. So we're open for questions. Oh, sorry. This is great. Talking about student voice. Here is a video of a student who graduated from B R in the Shism of Transportation. And went into aviation and she got a job right away because what the Shism program also does. It gives you all the certifications that are free that the employer who hires you doesn't have to pay for. So the students have that leg up. And so they have those certified certifications. They have a resume because they have worked with experiential learning. And they've also have started building their resume because they're teamed up with someone who's in the field. And they do field trips and a number of different things as part of their Shism to really start to embed. What does this theory look like when I actually muck about, right? And so this is one student telling us her experience. Elizabeth, if you can play. Yeah. I haven't even got the questions yet.
That's okay.
Okay, we can go on our YouTube channel and listen to it. What we have really here is the opportunity to see a testament and to really hear a testament. But again, you can go online and hear a few of them uh of what the success is. So this is where we are right now. We're also fortunate that we have a graduation coach for black students. Who is really has that lived experience of supporting and creating black excellence and black brilliance in schools. By way, looking at ways to connect with the community. So I'm going to invite one of our partners and my partner in crime here, Sita J. Froman. To introduce our graduation coach for black students, who will talk a little bit about what that program looks like at Saint Francis Xavier.
Thank you Superintendent Del Sordo. So I want to share a little bit about the graduation coach. Uh for black students and then introduce Akisha. So the graduation coach program for black students is a ministry. Of Education Initiative designed to provide intensive culturally responsive support for black students. With the goal of improving their well-being and achievement. This program is entirely voluntary and open to all black students in Saint Francis Xavier who wish to access these supports. For the role of the graduation coach is to provide individualized supports to black students and their families. With the goal of seeing each student feel safe, supported, accepted and affirmed. One of the key objectives of this program is to create identity affirming spaces for black students. It's my pleasure now to introduce you to Akisha Newton-Williams, the board's first graduation coach for black students. Akisha is a passionate child and youth worker with more than eleven years of experience in education. Providing academic and social support to elementary and secondary school students. She has an advanced diploma in child and youth work. She brings a wealth of knowledge and lived experience to her role as our first graduation coach. And over to Akisha to provide a, an overview of the program.
Thank you so much, Sita. That was a very nice introduction. Thank you. So I'm just going to repeat um a few things that Sita has already said, like my name is Akisha Newton-Williams. And I'm very honored to be here today to speak to you all about um the graduation coach program. Um so like Sita said, the purpose of the graduation coach program is to determine whether providing comprehensive culturally responsive. Support to black students will improve their well-being and academic achievements and help affect system changes. The results of the graduation coach program will inform future activities to support the success of black students. In publicly funded education system. And that um was a piece taken from the Ministry of Education report. Um I started in March, so I've only been here for about six weeks, but I feel like I've done quite a bit. Um next slide, please. So about my role, I act as a mentor and advocate and advisor to black students. Um I see an average of thirty to forty students daily. Um there are times where my classroom has maybe twenty five students at a time. And I've been fortunate enough to have an actual classroom. A lot of graduate coaches only have small offices. So I'm able to accommodate a lot more students than um normal. Um I also facilitate weekly black student union meetings. And just to note, this B S U. Um was already established before I started at Saint Francis Xavier. Um and also another part of my role is to offer barrier-free affinity space for students to authentically discuss issues. And experiences without judgment. Um something that I've said to our admin team on a number of occasions is. I see the students in a very different light than the rest of the staff do. Staffs see them as students. I see them as um. Children that are just wanting to be themselves. Um they open up to me. I can tell you from the very first day. I got there, student just came in and just told me her life story. And it's honestly very um. Very um, I don't even know what the word is. It really speaks to my heart um when I walk into a room and students just see themselves and they're able to. Just be themselves and speak to me um from a place of um honesty. Um I also provide access to nutrition, technology and mental health supports. A part of the program is to offer student nutrition. I'm getting my fridge tomorrow, which is very exciting. Um the kids, as soon as they see food, they're just very excited. Um now that I don't have a fridge, I've just been providing them with general snacks, biscuits in the morning. Um fruit, uh juice boxes, water and etcetera. Um I also provide them with technology. I've ordered three laptops that will be stationed in my classroom for them to use. I also have a printer for them to access if need be. And like I said, I also offer mental health support. Because I have a C Y C background, I do have a bit of counseling um experience. But I do also, I'm also very mindful of making sure that I push students to um get their support where it's needed. Uh for example, I send them to social work if needed. Um there's also a little gap there because a lot of families, black families, Caribbean, African families are very. Um resistant when it comes to social work. So I've partnered with community supports such as Roots and The Rock. Who offer um counseling service to students. If they're over twelve years old, they don't need consent to get support from a counselor. Um I also expose students to culture responsive workshops and education. Um like I said, I've only been there for about six weeks, so I haven't been able to um provide too many workshops. But the ones that I have so far have been from black artists um. And for education, I've started a library in my classroom um so that students are able to um. Take out books if they choose to. I collaborate a lot with uh school staff, caregivers and families, community members to support student learning. I regularly meet with the school staff, um admin on a weekly basis. Just to discuss school improvement, to discuss um staff, um sorry, not staff, um. Students' progress. Um I look a lot at their attendance, their grades. But I don't only focus on the students that are struggling with academics. I also look at the students that are excelling really well. I work with them on um their mental health and just general um care. Next slide, please. So so far, like I said, I've only been there for six weeks, but I've done quite a bit. Um most recently, I put together or I partnered with the Black Foundation Community Network. And they offered the school board a scholarship workshop that was specifically created for black students and families. And we had a very great turnout. We had two hundred and thirty registrants. Um it was a virtual workshop. So we had, I think, only a hundred and seventy parents actually came online. But it was a very informative um workshop and it was just to let parents know how to search for scholarships. And how to apply for those scholarships. Like I said, I also have a library in my classroom that highlights black authors. I visited a local black bookstore in Branton and purchased quite a few books from them. Ranging from graphic novels, poetry books, um black Canadian history books also. Last week, I had a in-school live painting workshop. I had an artist come in and do a workshop with our students. I was only able to accommodate twenty one students, but still had students knocking on the door asking if they could join. Um so that's something that I'm definitely going to have to bring back. So in that workshop, the artist prepared um pre-stenciled. Um canvases for the students and he did a step-by-step um walkthrough of how to paint this picture. Unfortunately, my, I was having some technical difficulties and I wasn't able to add pictures, but I had lots to share, I promise. Um if you follow me on Twitter, you can see some of my work there also. Uh we also will be having a cooking workshop next week with twenty five students. We have a chef coming in to do some cooking lessons with our students. Next slide, please. So my goals for next year and for the summer, um I am a twelve-month employee, so I will be working over the summer. My goal is to do two, one to two days a week where I can bring students in. We're still trying to figure out logistics on where we can host the students. Potentially, it will be at Saint Francis Xavier. Um we'll be having uh workshops for two to three hours of the day. I have spoken to students to just gauge their interest and they've expressed that they'd be very interested in coming to school in the summertime. Especially if it's to spend time with me. Um so next year, I'll definitely be continuing uh B S U meetings, weekly meetings with our students. And just to let you know, our B S U meetings are completely student-driven. Um our students are the ones that choose the topics in which they want to discuss. We've talked about things like colorism, um code switching, um the culture of our hair. Sorry. Um next year, I'd also like to provide more opportunities for parent involvement. Something similar to maybe a black parent advisory. I really think it's important for our black families to feel welcome in the school. And to find opportunities for them to connect with other black families. I'll also be providing leadership opportunities for our students, um very interest-based workshops. Again, because our B S U's are all of interest-based and student-run, we would like to also pull that into the school environment. Potentially have a presentation in the, in our theater to the broader school community. I'm also looking to do a black professionals expo. Um representation is very, very important. So I think it's important for students to see black professionals in professions that they are potentially um interested in. One thing that I wasn't able to um attend this year with our students because the deadline was just. because the deadline was just the first week that I started. The U of T BSA, so their Black Student Association, has a high school conference every year where they have students from Toronto District School Board, Halton District School Board, and P.O. come together. And it's all driven by their BSA students. Next slide, please. And lastly, I wanted to end with student voice. In my opinion, this is probably the most valuable piece of information I can share with you today. I promise you, I did not write this myself. I asked some of my students if they could write a little review of my performance. And this is just one that one of my grade twelve students wrote for me. So he wrote, "Though Ms. Akeisha has only been here for less than two months, she was able to leave an indelible, sorry, mark in our school and memories for us graduating grade twelves. The graduation coach has opened up opportunities to voice our opinions on both the school environment and changes that we believe should be made in said school environment. Ms. Akeisha has created a safe environment for all the black students to join together, creating opportunities with painting workshops and other seminars with special guests." So like I said, that was just one of my students' reviews. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Akeisha, and Principal Ed Jana for the wonderful work you did at St. FX. And thank you Superintendent Del Sordo for the exciting presentation. And with that, I shall open up the floor to trustees for questions. You have a speaker's list. First on the speaker's list is trustee Ohan Chanada. You're the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Just, I was wondering if Superintendent Del Sordo could just elaborate on the Chisum. So what is the actual process to go to the ministry? Say, we wanted to create another Chisum program. What is that process? I'm not sure I'm aware of that.
Superintendent Del Sordo.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. What has to happen is we have a, what we call a champion teacher, who has an interest and desire to work with kids based on a particular sector form. It could be landscaping, it could be, you know, hairdressing, it could be a number of different things. Then we look at to say, okay, the ministry wants us to start gauging how many students you can start the program with. Because if you have a very low number, they don't approve you because they have to fund it. And then once they do that, they want to start to look at your track record. So how many kids start a Chisum program? And then by the time, graduate with a Chisum seal? And if your track number is high and good, they're saying, okay, you're actually advocating for it and going forward. So it's an extensive application process that Mark Ives works with the teachers to collect the data that's necessary to say, this is how many students are going in the university pathway. This is how many kids expressed interest. This is how many kids expressed interest in these other pathways. Here is what the school has right now in terms of equipment. Here's what the school would need for further equipment. Here is what the school is planning on doing. Here's the teacher who has the following qualifications and interested in doing it. And then they send it off to the ministry.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanada. Follow.
No, just a comment. And to get ten approved then is a wonderful accomplishment and wonderful presentation. It just makes me tired looking at all the things that's going on there. Well done.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanada. Up next is Vaishra Agnew. You're the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Just two comments, and they're related, just about sort of student success and student achievement. So seeing the numbers that you presented with respect to how much better those students do when they are participating in that program, to see their academics, their academic marks go up because they're obviously loving what they're doing. We're finding ways to motivate them in ways that we probably didn't know about before. And so, you know, any opportunity that we have to increase that engagement and those opportunities for success, I mean, the numbers speak for themselves. So I was just, I was kind of blown away when I saw the difference for students that were in versus out of the program as far as those academic achievements. So, well done, and I hope we have an opportunity to expand the program so even more students can participate for something that really speaks to them and sets them up for the future. So thank you for that information. And then alongside those things, so Akeisha, thank you for your presentation. And along those similar lines, I'd love to see programs and initiatives in our system that just help students belong. We know that students do better when they feel a sense of belonging. And so, welcome, and we're thrilled to have you. And I'm excited to see the work unfold that you do with our black students. And again, any opportunity that we have to provide them with additional opportunities for feeling included in a sense of belonging, I'm all for. So thank you on both of those.
Thank you, Vaishra. Up next is trustee Saunders. You're the floor.
Yeah, I just want to say I had the opportunity to spend the day at the Skill Trades at St. of X, and I spent time talking to the itinerants. So it seemed like a very exciting thing, and I talked to all the kids. And they really enjoyed it. So I just wanted to say to Superintendent Del Sordo, thank you for organizing that. It was a great afternoon. And a lot of the kids had some great inventions that I would have bought if they had, if they had some available. So just I want to say thank you for that. It was a very, very exciting afternoon.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. Speaker is on. Up next, trustee Carabella. You're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Thank you very much for the presentation. And I had a question for Akeisha. So you mentioned that you can refer students for extra mental health support, but they don't need the consent of their parents. But are there, can you explain that? And then are their parents informed that they are seeking the extra mental health support?
Go ahead, Akeisha.
So if students go through our social work, they do need to have parent consent in order to speak to the social worker. And the social worker is able to then provide them with extra mental health support if they need it. But these community agencies, they do not need parent consent. So if the child is over twelve years old, they're able to access those services on their own.
Your trustee Carabella, follow. Go ahead.
So my follow-up would be, so they would go on their own? And would you know about it? And would you, as a, as a coach, tell their parents? Or do they get informed?
I'm not sure, Akeisha. Are you able to answer, or we can get some help from staff?
I think I may need help with that one.
Okay, I'll go to Director Klein. Director Klein.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to ask to see if there's any guidance or thoughts from senior staff on this. The, by support for mental health, I mean, there's a wide spectrum of what we mean by that. Certainly, schools aren't places that are, that are clinics or treatment centers. But the support for mental health ranges from what in local priorities of the Ed Act has in terms of duties of teachers and others. And there is a training in terms of basics of mental health, overall health, to the point where we have CYCWs and social workers as well. So I'm just looking over here to see if we have any thoughts in terms of that delineation of, of supports and communication around it.
Just, I just was able, all through, Mr. Chair.
Superintendent Del Sordo, go ahead.
I was able to connect with our chief social worker. And if they are accessing community supports, the age of consent is twelve.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, you have your answer.
Well, but the next part of that question is, is are the parents notified that the child is seeking the support? They don't have to, I understand that parents don't have to consent.
Right.
But are they notified?
Okay. Again, I'll pass this on to Director Klein, and staff can help.
Yep. Once again, I'm going to look over to senior staff in terms of what protocol is on these. And this might even be something we have to get back to in terms of the protocol.
Okay. Moving on. So staff will get back to you, trustee Carabella, on this thing, this item. Next up is trustee Kelly. You're the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Chair. And thank you, everyone, for the presentation. It was very informative. I did have a question for Ms. Akeisha. It was really great to hear that lots of different black students felt very welcome in their communities. I just had a question. I know you deal with St. Francis Xavier. Have you had any students outside those schools that were interested? Maybe the other students' friends who may wanted to visit it for that specific program?
Akeisha.
Not as of yet. I am in contact with our feeder schools. We just had our student success transition meeting. So in that regard, I'll be connecting with grade eight students at Blumen and St. Benedict, but no other secondary schools.
Thank you, trustee Kelly. You have a follow-up?
No follow-up. Thank you so much.
So with that, I do not see any other hands up. So, Akeisha, Superintendent Del Sordo, thank you so much for your presentation. And Superintendent Del Sordo, I had the pleasure, along with other trustees, to visit the Skills Program. And extremely pleased to see the enthusiasm that our staff works with, and good job down there. Moving on to our next item, item four point two, multi-year strategic plan consultation. I would now like to introduce Josh Fulon of Maximum City, who is a facilitator for the multi-year strategic plan. Tonight, Mr. Fulon presents the multi-year strategic plan consultation plan. Mr. Fulon is online. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. I've just got a short presentation to share. I just want to do a bit of a tech check because I'm remote. So I trust folks can hear me and that they can see my slides. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Good evening. My name is Josh Fulon, and I work for Maximum City. We are the consultants who are leading the development and consultation program for the multi-year strategic plan. And I just have a short presentation to walk us through the consultation plan that was submitted last week as part of the board package. I'll take you through a bit of our process in terms of how we came up with the plan, how we came up with the list of participants, the questions we will ask, the tools and the audiences that we will match those tools to. And then happy to take your questions. So as a bit of an introduction, here is our agenda. There is a timeline of the MYSP that I will share, walk you through the elements of the consultation plan at this point, keeping in mind that it is a work in progress, and we will update it as we learn more. And then finally, I'll share some next steps for the consultations that we already have planned for the MYSP development. These are the four phases of the MYSP development timeline. The mission, vision, and values were completed before we came on board. We are currently in phase two, which will take place sort of from the spring to the early summer. And that's where we do a background review. We gather information and we consult with folks in the HCDSP community, right from sort of the classroom to staff, to parents, to families, to community partners, to faith-based groups. And you'll see all of those folks reflected in our list, in our working list of participants. Phase three will take place in the fall after we do a bit of analysis and reporting over the summer months. And that's when we really define strategic priorities. We update the existing ones or point them in a new direction, depending on what we hear. And then phase four is sort of after our scope of work ends, and that's the implementation and the communication and the monitoring of the new strategic plan. So this is, this is sort of the cover image of what we submitted. And just before we get into our process a little bit, I'll say this. This plan was informed early by three things. Number one is our experience as facilitators and strategic plan developers. You know, we've done these plans for other school districts. We've done them for municipal divisions, so we bring that experience to bear here. It's also informed by the background review that we conducted of Halton Catholic District School Board's policies and documents. But most prominently, it is informed by a discussion we had with the steering committee made up of trustees and senior staff on April twenty-sixth. So it's those three things that sort of go into the funnel to create the consultation plan are our sort of background and experience, the context review, and most importantly, what we heard on that evening in April twenty, on April twenty-sixth, in terms of informing the plan. And just to peek into our process, this is the placemat activity we shared with folks on that evening. We had really four main questions that we would typically ask at this stage in the process. One is who should be consulted? Two is how should they be consulted? Three is what, what questions are good ones to ask of each group? And then finally, we provided a list, or sort of a menu of questions to edit, affirm, or remove. So I'll just go sort of through some of the things we heard in that process, and how what we heard really informed the plan that we submitted. So the first question was, who should be consulted? And broadly speaking, there were sort of four big categories of groups that we heard to be consulted. So a core group of students, staff, parents, caregivers and guardians, faith-based groups, educational partners, and also community groups and research institutes. So what does that look like in a sort of more granular level? This is what we would call kind of a stakeholder map or a working list of participants. It's not meant to be exhaustive. But you see that those four broad categories, when you start to sort of dig a little deeper into each of them, we're able to populate them meaningfully with folks we would need to reach out to as part of this process, whether it be through a survey, a focus group, or any of the other tools that are contemplated in the next series of slides. Question two was specifically about tools and methods. So how should participants be consulted? Which is the right tool to use with the right audience? Because that is often an important distinction to make in these processes. And there was, there was a strong sense that a survey and sort of a variety of other tools, things like focus groups, interviews, pop-ups, where you go onsite to events that are already taking place and intercept folks to get their feedback on the MYSP, were really good tools to use. And I'll just say that just a word of caution about the chart here. You know, it really was qualitative data. And we're sort of applying a quantitative lens by presenting the chart with percentages. But it was clear that those were the tools that folks recommended for us to use. The survey, that sort of bucket of other, and then the interviews and the focus groups. And then, so what we, what we did, once we got that sort of big working list of participants and we got the recommended tools, we start to map them out in terms of which tool and to match to which audience, and then start to book some of the consultations. So I won't take you through all of this, but I will point out two things here. There are kind of two groups that are steering the work that we're doing and giving us day-to-day guidance or week-to-week guidance. One is the steering committee, which is made up of trustees and senior staff. And they provide us with ongoing strategic support on a monthly basis. And then there's a smaller staff working group, which provides sort of more day-to-day operational and logistic support. I'll just sort of leave this slide up here for a moment because it shows some of the sessions that we've confirmed. So you can see where, where there is a checkmark on our table. Those are confirmed sessions. And then we have some others where the logistics are still being worked out. And also, again, this is a working list. As we learn more, we will add, and we will adjust the schedule and the consultations. We also align, one of the things we heard was that the board has some, already has some strong policies around consultation and engagement. And certainly, this is something we were gratified to see that the board uses our professional association's spectrum of engagement and levels of engagement. So that was something that we heard in our, both in our background review and at the steering committee, was that we have the spectrum of the engagement from the International Association of Public Participation. And that should be applied as a standard to the level of engagement and the level of influence that the different participants would have. And again, it's about matching the appropriate tool to the appropriate audience. And then these are the final two questions around what questions should we ask? This was sort of the, the heavy lifting on April twenty-sixth. This is really the, the challenge in a process like this, is getting it down to a handful of really good questions to go out and ask folks, and asking them differently, if you're asking it of a student or if you're asking it of a staff member or a parent or whoever it may be, and sort of getting the right questions in front of the right groups, and really working on the language to get it right. Something we heard clearly was that because different, different groups will have different familiarity with the strategic plan, that it was important to keep the language simple, keep it jargon-free, and really make sure that you're, we're speaking in plain language and meeting folks where they are in terms of language. So these are the questions, that's kind of the core questions that we landed on after going through the feedback from the group. I would say they're still subject to refinement in some ways. And sometimes when you're in a consultation, other questions come up in an ad hoc basis. So this is again, not a closed list, but it certainly gives us some good direction in terms of the types of questions you would like us to ask in keeping, keeping that simple jargon-free language diction in mind. I won't go through those questions there, but they're in our plan and we've sort of divided them at this point around different audience members and also the question type. At this point in an MYSP development process, you're really asking about goals and needs, sort of the big aspirational questions. And then we have separate questions, separate but complimentary questions. I would say all of these questions kind of line up in parallel. You know, if you put them side by side, you could see that they follow a progression and they're all similar in terms of the way they lead from one to another. So we have other questions for parents and caregivers and other ones for community partners. And then finally, just, I just have a few slides left before I take any questions. These guiding principles, these are actually the front matter in our consultation plan, but I put them at the end here because it really take, it took all of that information that I just shared with you to come up with these guiding principles. And these are really for us. These are for us as facilitators, as consultants, as a kind of set of guardrails, you know, really guiding principles to shape our work, to remind us of what we heard at the beginning, what we heard from the steering committee, what we learned in the background review. So if we, you know, get into them, you know, the middle of the summer and we're doing analysis, or we get into the fall and we're doing a different type of engagement, and we want to go back to the origin, sort of the nub of what we heard at the outset, we go back to these guiding principles. And I won't go through all of them. There's another slide that has another series, but I'll just sort of lift up the two that are bolded. One is, we heard this very clearly from the steering committee that the promoting of, promoting of the consultation events, engaging folks, you know, reaching people where they are informing them of the opportunities so that you get, you know, a very healthy response rate and supporting that through a communications plan in a really intentional way was important to this process. And again, that, that idea of using the plain language, spelling out acronyms, avoiding the educational jargon so that folks can really respond from a position of lived experience and their own personal experience. And then there's another series of guiding principles that I won't dwell on at this time. And here I am at my last slide. In terms of our next steps, there are sort of ongoing logistical planning and communication support. We have those two committees, one, the staff working group that, that meets on a more regular basis, and then the steering committee, which is giving strategic support. And we are right now in this phase two consultation. You'll see we have a number of consultations booked. We have two next week. And then another one the following week, and then another one in the first week of June, and others will be added as we, as we sort of sort through the logistics of that. In the survey, it's also in development. As again, that was something we heard that would be a useful tool, an effective tool for reaching a broad audience. We will spend part of the summer analyzing and reporting on what we hear. And then in phase three, we go into the synthesis and development of the new strategic plan. So that rounds off my presentation. I want to thank the chair and the board and everyone for listening. My colleague Priya, who who I need to thank for doing a lot of the heavy lifting on the analysis is here with me to answer any questions that you might have. And I'm also happy to oblige in terms of any questions that you may have. Chair, I'm just, I'm just looking to you in terms of facility, should I call, should I be calling on folks to, to respond to questions? Or is that something I should leave to you? Just looking for a bit of direction for me, Chair.
Mr. Fulon, or one of you, either Priya or yourself, could answer the questions?
Understood, but should we be calling on folks who have their hands raised in the, in the teams? Or is that something that you're going to do?
Folks with the hands raised, yes. Did you hear? I said I would call the trustees who have the hands raised and take question by question.
I apologize, Chair. I did not hear that.
Okay, so can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
When trustees have their hands up, I will call them up one by one and trustees have opportunity for two questions. I will refer them to you. Make sense?
Thank you, Chair.
So did you hear the question from trustee Johann Chanara?
I did not.
Could you repeat the question, trustee Johann Chanara?
With pleasure. Thank you. To you, Mr. Chair. Josh, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Awesome. Perfect. So I just have a question. In the report, it noted the end, so phase four would be twenty twenty-four with an asterisk. What, what does that mean?
It's, I hope it's a plus sign and not an asterisk. If it's a, if it's an asterisk, it's a typo. It just means twenty twenty-four and beyond because the term of the new NYSP lasts more than a year.
Okay, just a follow-up.
Yeah, it's a, I apologize. It's, I know the font is kind of small. It is a plus sign. So it's simply to say, simply to indicate that the, the monitoring, the implementation and the communication of that new plan, you know, begins when it, when it gets passed, it would continue for the term of the new plan, whatever that may be.
Thank you, trustee Johann.
Does that help?
Follow-up. So whether it's an asterisk or plus sign, thank you for that clarification. I guess my question really is, is the goal to complete the NYSP at the end of twenty twenty-three, not twenty twenty-four?
That's correct. Yes, appreciate the question through your chair. That is correct. The idea would be to submit it at the end of twenty twenty-three. And then it would be implemented, monitored and communicated in twenty twenty-four.
Perfect. That's the clarification I was looking for. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Next is trustee Carabella. You're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation. And I was wondering on the list of participants, if you said it's not exhaustive. So under the student groups, if somebody would like to make a suggestion, I just noticing about sports groups or science clubs, how would, how are you going to be taking extra ideas for participants in the various lists? Thank you.
Mr. Fulon?
Yeah, appreciate that question. We, we're happy to take suggestions now. Or you could feed it through us, to us via email. I don't know if it helps to put our email in, in the chat or put it in a slide. Or there would be staff members who have access to our email. Eventually, there will be a website set up where you, you know, there will be a more direct way to do this, but I think at this early stage, you can either tell us right now or I can share our office email in the chat if that's helpful.
So you don't have access to the chat box. I will share your email with all the trustees and they can email you directly.
Thank you, Chair.
I see no other hands up. So thank you, Mr. Fulon, for your presentation. There's a lot of work to be done and we are on track to meet our multi-year strategic plan completion. We do have an action item later on in the agenda. So once again, thank you so much for your presentation tonight.
You're welcome.
We shall now move on to item four point three, education development charges, consideration of bylaw passage meeting. Superintendent Loft, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is actually a continuation of the process for the Holton Catholic District School Board to pass an education development charge bylaw, which will apply to the development of land in the region of Holton. The new bylaw is required because the current bylaw of the board, which has been, which was passed back in twenty eighteen, is scheduled to expire shortly. The purpose of the meeting this evening is for the board to pass a new EDC bylaw. We have been advised by our legal counsel, Brad Teichman, who's also in attendance tonight of Overland LP, that the board has satisfied all the conditions with respect to the board enacting an education development charge bylaw. So we've had the background study done. Well, we've conducted the public meeting on April eighteenth and we received ministry approval. Mr. Jack Andola, he's our consultant with the, with the EDCs of Watson and Associates, is now about to provide us with a short presentation. Jeff?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Aaron. And hello to the board through you, Chair. Brief presentation, we really just want to review what Superintendent Loft just went through. So we want to assure, assure the board that you are in a position to consider passage of this bylaw tonight. At the last meeting, we've fulfilled most of the conditions. My controlling. If you can just move to the first slide, thank you. So we did fulfill most of the conditions after the, the last public meetings we had. We had to prepare an EDC background study that's been completed and that's been released to the public. We had the two public meetings that we had to have. Those were both completed the last time we met, the policy review meeting and the background study meeting. With regard to the study, it had to be made available, available to the public at least two weeks before that first meeting. Notice had to be provided for all those meetings. So all those things were completed after that last public meeting. The only thing that was still outstanding was that assumptions in the background study had to be approved by the Minister of Education. The board received that letter around four o'clock today. So that condition has been approved or been fulfilled as well. So like Superintendent Loft said, the board is in a position to pass the bylaw tonight. If we move to the next slide very quickly, we just want to assure the board of trustees that we have had information and, and information exchange as well as meetings with relevant stakeholders throughout the region. They have provided some correspondence back to the board. Again, today, a letter was, was received from Build, which is the building industry land and development organization that basically represents a large share of the, of the residential home builders and non-residential builders in the region. While they expressed a couple of issues, as they always do, that they want to continue to have dialogue over, they generally appeared favorable to the proposed EDC and in the letter suggested that they would not pursue any further appeals of the study. So we feel that, that we've fulfilled the public engagement portion of, of the EDC and like I said, have a generally favorable response from our stakeholders. And if we move to the next slide, just before the board considers passage, just a reminder, there's recommendations that are contained in Mr. Vidovic's staff report. But on the slide that you're looking at now, it just shows you your current twenty twenty-three education development charge rate. Right now, it's three thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars per unit residential, ninety-four cents per square foot of non-residential space. If the board approves the increases in the new bylaw, reminder from our last presentation, you have an annual limit by how much you can increase the, the existing rates. So if the board passed the new bylaw, your new year one rate would be three hundred dollars above your existing rate. That's the maximum allowable increase. It would go to four thousand and sixty-nine dollars per residential unit. On the non-residential side, your maximum allowable increase is ten cents over the existing charge. So it would be a dollar four. And you can see the various rates throughout the year based on that cap and phase in. So I'll stop there and see if there's any questions from trustees.
Trustees, do we have questions? Oh, Mr. Mandolia. Trustee Kennedy, your hand is up. You're the floor.
Just a question. So the, through you, Mr. Chair, on the non-residential, so going up ten cents, so like it's over ten percent. Is that recommended or is that still something to discuss later? Sorry, I came in a little late there.
Yeah, no. So the legislation allows the non-residential charge to go up by a maximum of ten cents per year until you hit your maximum charge. So that ten cent increase is exactly consistent with what you're allowed to increase by. So it's ten cents per year or five percent of the charge, whichever amount is greater.
Trustee Kennedy, you have a follow-up? Good. Okay, thank you. Any other trustees have questions? For Mr. Mandolia? Saying none, do you have anything else to present? So I shall proceed with the next part, which is a formality, though I'm not sure, but we'll see. Does any member of the public wish to address the board in relation to this matter at this point in time? I don't see any member of the public any issues. So with that, I do not see any further questions. Staff recommendations and motions will be addressed later this evening under action item nine point two. I want to thank our counsel, Brad Teichman, and our board's consultant, Jack Mandolia, for your presentation and supporting us through this process. Thank you so much. Our next order of business is delegations. We do not have delegations tonight. Moving on to our next order of business, which is consent agenda items. The following items have been agreed upon at the agenda approval to stay on the consent agenda. Items six point one, action items, six point one point one, six point one point two, which is all the policies, there are three policies, six point one point two point one, six point one point two point two and six point one point two point three. So these are action items. There will be one vote on the action items and the noted items are six point two. They will not be discussed. I shall read the motion for the action items. Resolve that the Holton Catholic District School Board approve consent agenda items six point one, which is made up of six point one point one and six point one point two on sixteenth May twenty twenty-three is submitted. May I have a mover for this item? Looking for a mover, please.
I'm moving.
Trustee Johann Chanara, looking for a second there.
I'll second.
Trustee Powell. I shall, there's, there's going to be no discussion on this item. I shall take it to a recorded vote. Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell? Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Johann Chanara?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
So you have eight in favor, non-oppose, no abstention, motion carries. We shall skip over approval of the minutes, business arising from previous minutes. And our next order of business is the action item. We have several action items tonight, and before we dive into action items, I just want to review the rules for everyone's benefit once again. The presenting trustee will have five minutes to present before we open discussion. I have the timer. We will have question period where each trustee gets to ask questions for three minutes for clarification purposes only. So question period first. There'll be no debate during that time and then we shall open up the floor for debate, which is again, three minutes. And then the presenting trustee gets three minutes to close discussions on the vote. So with that, we shall move on to item nine point one, board response to committee recommendations. This was a notice of motion at the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three board meeting. It was an action item on the May second board meeting. As the presenter was unavailable, the action item has been moved to this meeting. So with that, I'll pass it on to trustee Agnew. Please read the motion.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. So whereas school board trustees are locally elected public representatives who serve as the community's advocate for public education, and whereas the Holton Catholic District School Board values relationships and partnerships and is committed to providing meaningful feedback mechanisms for all stakeholders. Whereas parent and community committees, such as the Special Education Advisory Committee, SEAC, the Catholic Parent Involvement Committee, CPIC, and HCDSP Catholic School Councils are intended to serve as a link between community partners and the Holton Catholic District School Board. And whereas there is currently no policy or procedure in place to outline the process by which HCDSP committees may submit recommendations to the board of trustees, be it resolved that the Holton Catholic District School Board direct the policy committee to revisit and revise the HCDSP procedural bylaw to include, include a clear and consistent process for the board of trustees to receive and respond to recommendations by HCDSP committees.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Please open up discussion on your motion. You have five minutes in your time. Oh, yes. This is moved by trustee Agnew. Looking for a second, please.
I can second.
Trustee Kelly. So trustee Agnew, you have five minutes to open up the discussion and your time starts now.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I know you like your clock. It won't take that much time. But simply for those trustees who may not be aware, but I think most of you are now, is that we do have several committees as were outlined in the motion. And we do from time to time have committees get together and review policies or review other items. You know, they are there in an advisory capacity. And so there is, like I said, from time to time, some of our committees do have some recommendations they would like to bring forward to the board of trustees. And, you know, while, while intended, there is actually no formalized process by which a committee can do that. And so in the past, we've done it a number of different ways. We've always tried to make sure that we're definitely gathering that feedback from those committees. And I think we've done a decent job in trying to respond to some of those recommendations. But as always, we're always trying to look for something that But as always, we're always trying to look for something that is more concrete and established and there's a process and a protocol to follow as same. And so the motion is just simply to try to establish a mechanism by which we can have a process and a procedure that these committees can bring forward recommendations should they have something they would like to bring forward to the Board of Trustees. That's all I've got, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. With that, I shall now open up question period. Trustees, do we have questions? Questions only for trustee Agnew. So on the floor, speakers list, we have trustee Saunders and trustee O'Hern Chanara. Trustee Saunders, you're the floor.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering, you know, I guess we've had these committees for many, many years. What's been the process to bring their recommendations forward now? Does the board, does trustee bring it forward as a motion? Or what have we done to bring these forward in the past?
Thank you. I shall pass this to Director Klein.
Thank you, Chair. I think the processes are multifaceted. I've been looking at CPIC, our CPIC superintendent here and SEAC as well. I think they can go through those committees themselves. They can go through superintendents, they can go through director's office. So there's many ways of addressing these issues. If there's other ways, let me know, but it's fairly much open doors rather than closed doors.
Thank you, Director Klein. Would you like superintendents of SEAC and CPIC to comment too? Or? Would you like superintendents of CPIC and SEAC? Yeah, go ahead, Superintendent Denalfo and Superintendent Bukic. Oh, sorry.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just with CPIC, first we have trustees who sit at CPIC. So all the communication that we receive at CPIC is presented and the trustees are present for those meetings. So they hear and then we will action if there needs to be. The action usually happens just operationally. But if there's something, we always will encourage that it come to the board for discussion and then action from the board.
Thank you. Superintendent Rosini, would you like to add anything to that?
Through you, Mr. Chair. When we make recommendations for SEAC members, it comes from SEAC as a recommendation and is just approved.
Thank you, Superintendent Rosini. Trustee Saunders, you have a follow up.
So I'm not entirely sure, this almost looks like another policy committee. So do we, do we risk creating like, like we've already got a policy committee? Is this going to be like stuff will come up from these groups? That'll be like something from the policy committee, but not going through the regular, the regular process? So I'm just wondering, is this another level of, of sort of bureaucracy and stuff?
I'll pass this to Director Klein to answer.
Speaking of policy committee, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Bukic because she was reminding me of bylaws that I think have certainly something in them that will help.
Thank you, Director Klein and through you, Chair. I would, I would draw everyone's attention to 7.2.8 in the bylaws. Under members' right to speak, the committee chair shall bring reports of the committee to the board and thereafter, all trustee members of an ad hoc standing committee shall have the right to speak to the report. I can defer back to trustees. I'm not sure if this has actually taken place in the past, but this may be the mechanism for which chairs of the committees can bring forward recommendations and or reports to the Board of Trustees in order for review.
Trustee Saunders, okay. You won't respond. Go ahead.
So I think there's a little bit of misunderstanding. So it's not, so thank you, Superintendent Bukic. It's, it's just referring back to policy to review our bylaw on the matter. So we're not trying to tie it up in policy. So it's not like another committee on top of policy. So the reality is, is while we do have these different mechanisms, if like right now, if we had a SEAC meeting and there was a recommendation that came from SEAC, whether that be via a motion or otherwise, there's actually no written procedure on how that comes forward. Is it the superintendent that brings it forward? Is it the chair? Is it the trustee that sits on that committee? And then actually, once that comes forward, what is the obligation of the Board of Trustees to respond back to that? So what is the, so it comes back, let's say a motion comes from SEAC? What happens to it at that point? So because there is some action potentially tied to some of these recommendations coming from committees, we don't currently have a written process right now. And this has come up at SEAC. It's come up from a number of different times in our meetings at SEAC. And so that was part of the reason for wanting to bring it forward. And it's also been referenced at CPIC as well.
Thank you. Up next is trustee O'Hern Chanara, you're the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the motion, trustee Agnew. I just have some, two clarifying questions. Under the be it resolved that the policy committee review the actual bylaws, what you just spoke to, to include a clear and concise process. So the ask is to revisit, but the ask is also in writing to revise it. What if we revisit it? And the need to revise it isn't there? So the only problem is that it's being directed to revise. We haven't even looked at it yet as a group. So I don't know, I'd, I'd like to ask if friendly event to review it and take the word revise out of it. That would be my ask.
Trustee O'Hern Chanara, right now we're taking questions only. We'll finish the question period and then come for that, okay? So trustee Agnew, do you want to respond to that?
I would be totally fine with that. And you're right, I think it was probably just an assumption, we all know what they say, but assumptions, just an assumption that perhaps we may need to revise it, but I would be absolutely fine with that. And obviously would be coming to policy to have the input of, you know, of staff for this because it is operational. So yes, for sure, I'd be fine with just having it reviewed. Trustee O'Hern Chanara.
Just my other question in regards to clear and consistent process to the Board of Trustees. And I guess we can talk about it if it gets passed and it goes to the policy for procedural bylaw, but how it would come to the board, I guess that's up for discussion. So forget I said anything, never mind.
Thank you, trustee O'Hern Chanara. Up next, we have trustee Carabella, you have the floor, you have three minutes for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm having a little, a bit of a question about you saying the third, whereas it says parent and community committees such as SEAC, CPIC. Now, these are actually statutory committees. And I wanted to have that clarified, that these are committees that are in the Ed Act and there's already a process. Well, I think that that should be clarified, tightened up. And even in the be it resolved, the last line, trustees to receive and respond to recommendations, not just by any HCDSB committee, but by the statutory committees of SEAC, CPIC and school council committees. So that that's clear. And.
So trustee Carabella, that's an amendment you're looking to do later, right?
Yeah, or just like have that understood or clarified. And I think that, yeah.
Okay, so any other questions, trustee Carabella?
Not right now, thank you.
Okay. So with that, we shall move on down to the next speaker, which is trustee Kennedy, you're the floor.
Just wondering, with the process we have now, could those committees or members of those committees delegate on what they spoke? What is that an option for them to delegate to the board?
So trustee Kennedy, members of the public, if they want to delegate, they can go and delegate to those committees, number one. And number two, they can delegate to the board. You're always welcome to delegate to any of the committees across the board too.
So there is a mechanism, so members of the committee can have a discussion and a member from that committee could delegate on behalf of the committee to the board?
Delegation to the board is open to all stakeholders.
Right.
They could be members of the committees.
Sure.
But I think I'll defer this once again to, I think there's been some instance in the past. So occurred in SEAC. Let me just pass this question to Vice Chair, to, to assist me on this.
So it's not, so thank you for the example, trustee Kennedy. So it's not so much the delegation piece. It's more like what is the formalized process for a committee, whether it be statutory or otherwise? So a delegation is a delegation, right? It's not, I mean, there's not necessarily an action attached to the delegation. So if SEAC or CPIC sits down, reviews something and has a recommendation, maybe that is to create a committee. Maybe that is to change a policy, maybe that is something. So what is, what's the formalized process for that committee to bring forward that recommendation to the Board of Trustees? So sure, someone can delegate, but delegate is just delegating on a matter as we know. It's speaking to a matter that's before the Board of Trustees for decision and consideration. A committee, that may not be the case. Again, it might be that they want to create a specific committee, subcommittee. I'm making up examples. It could be again that they reviewed a policy and they've got some criteria to bring forward. It could be anything that that committee has decided that they would like to bring forward to the Board of Trustees as a recommendation. That's the process that we don't currently have in place right now, separate from a delegation consideration, if that makes sense.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy, you have a next question?
So for delegations, we're not required to respond at all? We take it as an information item unless a trustee brings it forward as a motion? But for the purpose of this, this item would be to actually require a response? That would be the main, that would be the major difference?
So one second, trustee Kennedy, we have bylaws with delegation which explains how it's going to be handled.
It can just stay as an information.
It could be an information item and then further down, trustee could put a notice of motion for the next meeting. So that's what the bylaws is, it can be done in any committee, it's the same thing.
So we're not required to respond at the delegation? We don't, we leave as information. We would be required to respond to a committee, this process. You want to formalize a process of response?
Right, I think it'd be the entire, can I?
Yes, you have the floor now.
Thank you. So I think that's part of the idea. And again, this is the kind of stuff I'm hoping to flesh out as part of that conversation around revisiting that. But yeah, it would be, it would be, again, how do we move that recommendation formally from the committee to the Board of Trustees? So what's the mechanism to do that? And then what happens from there? So if it does come forward, what are the requirements for the Board of Trustees to respond to that recommendation? Right now, there's, there's nothing formalized about that. So that's what we're just trying to put in place. So that's the intent behind the motion.
Trustee Kennedy, any other question? You still have two minutes. You can, but not for questions. They're going to close question time and debate. No, thank you. So with that, trustee Carabella, I see your hand up. You have already had question time. Is this, so I shall now open debate time and I shall hand the floor over to trustee Carabella. You have your hand up. One second. Okay, you're the floor, go ahead.
I'm not understanding, I'm not allowed to ask any questions?
Yes, question time is over. Because you had an opportunity, you have three minutes for each, for each trustee. I specified that the rules very clearly upfront. So three minutes for questions, three minutes for debate. And those are the bylaws, the way the bylaw is. So now question time is closed, I'm opening up debates. So trustee Carabella, you're the floor.
Okay, so I would like to say that in the past, we've had ad hoc, I'm looking at the bylaws too. And there are some processes and I've lived through several ad hoc committees that come to the board with a presentation. They present them to the board. We've had reports brought to the board as information. I'm thinking of the French immersion committee was a committee that was formed and then later came as a presentation and gave their recommendation. I'm still wanting to make it clear that it's the statutory committees. The, I think other committees can, can present by coming to the board at presentation or an information item.
Trustee Carabella, you have any amendment to make or?
Sure, so I would like to.
Okay, can you have the, yes. Can tell you my contribution?
Thank you. Well, I'm just proposing that it's the statutory committees, that the Spec Ed Committee and the CPIC and the Catholic School Councils are statutory committees. So I wanted to change that from parent and community committees to statutory committees.
So trustee Carabella, this is not part of the motion.
No, it's an amendment then?
I'm not sure how this is to be.
I can make an amendment.
It's an explanatory notes, the first bearers are explanatory notes. The motion is the one beat resolved and amendments are generated to the motion, not explanatory.
Right, so I'd like to make an amendment to the be it resolved.
Okay, hold on one second. Ms. Swindon, do you have this in the word format?
I do, Chair, I will, I will share my screen.
Okay, trustee Carabella.
So I'd like to, the last line, trustees to receive and respond to recommendations by the statutory committees of the SEAC, CPIC and School Council Committees.
Thank you, trustee Carabella.
Okay.
This is an amendment to the main motion. It moved by trustee Carabella, looking for a second, please. Looking for a second. Trustee Saunders. Seconds it. So trustee Carabella, you have. Trustee Carabella, you have five minutes to open up discussion.
Through you, Mr. Chair, thank you. So I'm just proposing this amendment to clarify that it would be regarding the statutory committees that are, are in the Ed Act and there's regulations about them. So we have other committees and. Excuse me?
Sorry, trustees, when trustee has the floor. Okay, go ahead, trustee Carabella, go ahead, trustee Carabella.
So we have other venues for other committees to come forward. Either if there's superintendent on that committee, it's come forward as an information item or a board report. We've had presentations on, on ad hoc committees from ad hoc committees. And so I thought that this motion should be more clear, that it's just for the statutory committees. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Trustees, I'll now open up the floor for, for discussion. We'll follow the same pattern once again, three minutes for question time, three minutes for debate. And then a close discussion, trustee Carabella gets to close. So up next is trustee Saunders, do you have questions, trustee Saunders? Okay, I'll lower your hand. Trustee O'Hern Chanara, do you have questions for trustee Carabella?
I do, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Carabella, I just offer up to you, do you think it might be problematic? Since in the bylaws, it's under the column 7.2, which states ad hoc backslash standing committees because the motion is directing us to look at the bylaw. So to keep it consistent, it might be problematic with that amendment.
Trustee Carabella, you would like to respond to that?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. 7.3 is an area that has actually no items in it. It's called statutory committees. And I think that we could develop that section there on the bylaws. It's 7.3 called statutory committees. Which right now has nothing, so I think that we can develop that.
Yeah, so trustee Carabella, that's residue of the previous review. That section should not have been there. It's just a kind of an error in the table. It was from the past bylaw review, which was deleted. So, yeah, there was, there's no 7.3 actually. So trustee O'Hern Chanara, follow up question?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chair, I do follow up. And respectfully, trustee Carabella, I really think we need to keep ad hoc backslash standing committees because we're referring to the bylaw 7.2.8, the members' right to speak and how that's all going to work, in my humble opinion. So I think this line is problematic. It doesn't, it's not consistent. So I think this line is problematic, it, it doesn't, it's not consistent.
Up next is trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So actually, the question I have on this is that I'm wondering if someone can point me to the formalized process for ad hoc committees and other committees to bring forward their recommendations? Is there, is there a formalized process and procedure in place for that?
Thank you trustee Agnew. I'm good at policy, trustee Superintendent Bakaj, would you be able to comment?
Thank you Chair, I, I can try. Typically, what I've seen in the past, the first part of that question, trustee Agnew, to me, has come through feedback and recommendations to policies as they're presented to specific committees such as CAC, perhaps CPIC. There are, there are either chairs of the committee that are trustees or participate on the committee, and in the past, they've brought information back to the board by way of amendments to policies, but as a specific report, not to my knowledge.
Trustee Agnew, go ahead.
So there's no, so there's currently no procedure, there's no formalized procedure, even outside of policy, there's no formalized procedure for any committee, whether it be ad hoc, statutory, standing or otherwise, to bring forward a recommendation.
Superintendent Bakaj?
Chair, a named procedure, no.
Thank you. Up next, we do not have a speaker's list, so with that, we shall, okay, trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'm just trying to understand currently, is there a difference in the way a standing committee recommendation is handled by the board as opposed to a recommendation coming from a statutory committee? I don't know who can answer that.
I'll pass the second to Superintendent Bakaj.
Thank you Chair. I, I really don't know, trustee Murphy, because I, I can't cite an example, does anyone have an example, trustees current or past? By, other than by way of recommendations through policy?
So you have a follow up?
So it hasn't happened at all in the past, this is, how has it been handled? Is there a different way or are they?
Sorry, Director, it has been through an email to the Chair and the Director and responses have been sent, that's the way it's been handled in the past.
For standing committee recommendation?
Not for standing committee, we have not had that example, does anybody, any of the senior staff remember? It's always through a report, so any recommendations comes through a report, which is handled in our bylaws. And then it's up to the Board of Trustees to accept or modify or reject it. That's how it's handled.
I'm just marinating this information.
Thank you. We do not have any other speaker right now, so I shall pass this back to trustee Carabella to close discussion, and you have three minutes.
I just wanted to bring it to the, yeah, I just wanted to make that clear that it's for the statutory committees and not every committee, and that we would start there, that's why, thank you.
Thank you trustee Carabella, I shall now take, take the vote. So trustees, we are voting on what you see on the screen, items in blue. Beat resolved, the Holden Catholic District School Board direct the policy committee to revisit and revise the HCSB procedural bylaws to include a clear and consistent process for the Board of Trustees to receive and respond to recommendations by HCSB statutory committees of CAC, CPIC and Catholic School Councils. I shall now call the vote on this, trustee Carabella, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Just, yes.
Just the amendment, yeah, adding the items in blue that you see on the screen, adding the word statutory and of CAC, CPIC and Catholic School Councils.
I, I'm.
So are you in favor or are you opposed?
I'm confused.
Okay.
I'm confused, because.
So I can't have discussion right now, but, so I'll go around tables and come back to you if you want. Okay, trustee Kennedy? Okay, trustee Ohan Chanara?
I'm opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
I guess I can't ask a question, right? This is voting yes or no?
Yeah, so we are voting on the items in blue.
Okay, and then statutory thing is not in the bylaws, the statutory committees.
No, there are different mechanisms.
Okay.
As explained.
Okay, then, no.
You're opposed. Okay, trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
And trustee Duarte is opposed, so we have four in favor, five in opposed, the amendment fails, we shall go back to the main motion. So going back to the main motion, we had a speaker's list and debate was open on the main motion, we have trustee Carabella spoken to it, trustee Murphy was up next to speak to the main motion, can we have the main motion? Okay, it's up there, so trustee Murphy, would you like to speak to the main motion? No, okay, thank you. Do we have speakers? So I have trustee Ohan Chanara, you have a hand up, you have the floor, and you have three minutes, your time starts now.
Thank you, Chair Jordan, I won't need the three minutes, it's just going back to what I said earlier, I'm just hoping for a friendly amendment to remove the word and revise, that doesn't mean we won't revise it, it just means we'll leave to revisit and we'll do what the board thinks is best based upon hashtag do better, that's all.
Thank you trustee Ohan Chanara. So you are moving an amendment to change the word, to delete the word and revise, correct?
Hopefully a friendly amendment.
Okay. Do I have a mover for the amendment? Oh, sorry, you move.
I'm the mover, yeah.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Powell. Trustee Ohan Chanara, you get to open up, and?
Just hashtag do better, by removing it doesn't mean we don't revise it, I just like review, let us do a review, let us be organic and talk about this bylaw, because as we have, there's a few questions here and there's some gray areas, so that's all I'm asking for.
Okay, thank you trustee Ohan Chanara, we have a couple of speakers here, trustee Saunders, would you like to? Not for this, okay. Trustee Murphy, would you like to speak to this item? The deletion of the word and revise on the screen? No, okay, so I'll leave your hands up there. Since no other trustees have questions regarding this, trustees, do we have questions regarding these two words? No? So with that, I shall give trustee Ohan Chanara to close discussion on the amendment, and I shall call the vote. Trustee Ohan Chanara, you have the floor.
Let's just vote in favor of the amendment, take out the word revise, and we'll do the right thing, and we'll talk about it in policy and look at the bylaw.
Thank you trustee Ohan Chanara. With that, I shall call the vote on the amendment to the main motion. Okay, trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanara?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
So we have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention, motion carries, amendment carries, we shall now go back to the main motion as amended. So we were, we had a speaker's list, we had trustee Saunders up next, and then trustee Murphy, trustee Saunders, you'd like to speak to the main motion?
Yeah, I just.
Go ahead, you have the floor, one second, hold on, I'm sorry, hold on. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I think the intention, it is well intentioned, but I, I just don't see the, the, the need to, to revisit this, I think we've got processes that get this information up, and it, it just seems like more structure, more things we have to deal with that, I don't think we need to, so.
Thank you trustee Saunders. Up, up next is trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Actually, I was just going to echo what trustee Saunders said, I, I just think this is vague and I don't feel it's needed at this point.
Thank you trustee Murphy. So with that, I have no others, okay, so trustee Agnew, you get to close discussion. Trustee Carabella, you have your hand up, you have not spoken before, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. I won't be supporting the motion as it is, I really think that the focus should have been on the statutory committees, thank you.
Thank you trustee Carabella. I see no other hand up, so I'll now pass it on to trustee Agnew to close discussion, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so, I mean, we've had a great debate, so thank you everybody for the questions. So I, I think what I'm actually trying to do is not muddy the waters, I'm actually trying to clarify, you've heard repeatedly tonight, we do not have a current process, this has actually come from a member at CAC who has raised it a number of meetings in a row with respect to a need to have a formalized way in which to bring recommendations forward. We don't actually have it, so I'm not, I'm not in the habit of making work and creating policies and procedures that we don't need to have, we do not have one. So this is not about going back and adding extra layers, we actually don't have any layers to add to anything. And so the idea behind this is, I have not yet heard tonight, if a committee has a recommendation, how they bring the recommendation forward to the Board of Trustees in a formalized way, and then how that is responded to, we don't have that. So I, and I looked for it and I waited to hear for it tonight, we don't have it. So if CPIC or CAC wants to bring something forward, they just have to hope, maybe it's an email, maybe it's in a report, maybe it's in a presentation through a trustee, maybe it's in a motion that a trustee brings forward, they're all maybes, we heard a bunch of different mechanisms tonight to do that. I'm trying to look for a way to bring this to the policy committee via the bylaw, which is the proper process, to have the conversation and establish, if needed, a formalized process so that we can bring recommendations forward. That's simply the intent behind this, and I hear many times around this table, we're trying to make things easier for our stakeholders in order to express their concerns, ideas, et cetera, and I'm trying to make that easier in the absence of not having anything. So support it, don't support it, that's the intent behind the motion, so thank you.
Thank you trustee Agnew, and with that, I shall call the vote on the main motion as amended, moved by trustee Agnew, seconded by trustee Kelly. Trustee Powell, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Opposed.
Trustee Ohan Chanara? Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Trustee Saunders?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
I'm opposed.
And trustee Duarte is in favor, we have five in favor, four opposed, motion carries, it shall go to policy for review. We shall now move on to the next action item, 9.2, 2023 Education Development Charges, EDC bylaw. I will now call upon Superintendent Lopes, our senior manager, Vitoic, to speak to action
Thank you, Mr. Chair, good evening again, everyone. Please find attached action item 9.2, 2023 Education Development Charges bylaw for trustees to consider. So additional information received today includes notification from the Ministry of Education approving HCSB's 15-year enrollment forecast, the capacity to accommodate the students and the estimated number of sites required to meet projected enrollment for the new development growth. Also received today was confirmation from the Building Industry and Land Development Association, also known as BILD, that they would not be appealing any of our proposed EDC bylaws. I'd like to ask senior manager of Planning Services Bronco Vitoic, you can see as well that Jack Madola from Watson and Brad Teichman from Overland are also here as well to answer the additional questions, or Bronco, do you have anything else to add?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I have nothing else to add, Aaron Superintendent Lopes explained it perfectly, thank you.
Thank you. So there are three parts to this motion, and we will deal with them separately. I will read the motions and then we'll take questions, and we have Bronco there with consultants there. So motion number one, can we have that on the screen? Okay. The motion now, this is three parts, we will be taking three different votes. Motion number one, beat resolved, the Holden Catholic District School Board has determined in accordance with section 257.63 subsection 3 of the Education Act that a further public meeting concerning the proposed education development charges bylaw is not necessary. The motion is placed on the table, may I have a mover for this item?
I'll move it.
Moved by trustee Ohan Chanara, looking for a second.
One second.
Trustee Powell seconds, do we have any questions on this motion? No, saying none, we shall call the vote on this item, trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanara?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly? Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
So we have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention, the motion number one, the first part carries. For the second part, the, the board has received a submission for, from the Building Industry and Land Development.
Sorry, point of order, sorry, as you said, eight in favor, did you vote in favor?
Sorry, seven in favor, thank you trustee Saunders, seven in favor. Thank you for pointing that out. For the second part, the board has received a submission from the Building Industry and Land Development Association, also known as BILD, in relationship to the proposed bylaw. As a result, the following motion is required, and this is the second part there. Beat resolved, the Holden Catholic District School Board has determined in accordance with section 257.63 subsection 2.1 of the Education Act that no changes to the background study or the proposed bylaws are required as a result of representation received from the public relating to the proposed bylaw, alternative projects or localized education development agreements. The motion is now on the table, may I have a mover for this item? Trustee Carabella, looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Trustee Murphy, any questions? Saying none, I shall call the vote on this item. Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanara?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
We have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention, the second motion carries. We shall now move on to the third part, third and final part, and this calls for the enactment of the bylaw. Motion number three, beat resolved, the Holden Catholic District School Board enact the education development charges bylaw in the form and with the content recorded in the bylaw attached as appendix B to action report 9.2 from May 16, 2023, regular board meeting. Such bylaw to come into force on June 1, June 1, 2023. The motion is on the table now, may I have a mover for this item? Trustee Murphy moves, looking for a second, trustee Powell seconds it, any questions? Saying none, I shall call the vote on motion number three. Trustee Ohan Chanara?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Favor.
So we have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention, motion carries. That concludes the matter on the Education Development Charges bylaw, thank you so much for coming and being available to take questions and presenting, thank you so much. We shall now move on to our next item, 9.3, multi-year strategic plan consultation plan approval. Director Klein, please present the action item. Director Klein, please present the action item for the multi-year strategic plan.
Thank you, Chair. Not unlike the previous item, this item bridges back a half hour or more to a report that we had from Josh Fulon and Maximum City. So I, I draw your attention to the, the report that we have that is about a page and a half long, but the seventeen or more pages that are attached to it are the, harking back to the, to the presentation we had earlier. So again, not unlike the last report we had, I'd ask trustees to look at the recommendation at the bottom that refers to that report that described what has taken place thus far and what the next steps are in terms of the multi-year strategic plan that will stretch to two thousand twenty-four plus. And the resolution that is at the bottom of this under the recommendation.
Thank you, Director Klein. Trustees, any questions on the multi-year strategic plan consultation plan we had a presentation earlier? Saying none, I will, I will read the motion. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees approved the action report on the multi-year strategic plan, including consultation, including the consultation plan and the updated timelines. May I have a mover for this item?
I'll move it.
Trustee Murphy moves. Looking for a seconder.
I'll second it.
Trustee Ohan Chanada, any questions, trustees? If not, we shall call the vote. Shall call the vote on the, on item nine point three. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanada?
In favor.
And our student trustees are here. Welcome. Trustee Chua?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma?
In favor.
So we have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention. Motion carries. We shall now move on to item nine point four, report on implementation of the two thousand twenty-three Student School Climate Survey at HCDSP. This item is a notice of motion from the May second regular board meeting and is now an action item. Trustee Murphy, how would you like to proceed?
I'm actually going to withdraw this.
Put a bid on motion? Okay. Thank you, Trustee Murphy. The motion is withdrawn. And we shall move on to item nine point five. Item nine point five is two thousand twenty-four Canadian Association of Public Schools, International CAPS dash I Trade Missions Brazil. Director Klein?
Thank you, Chair. We're going to be withdrawing this to a later date.
Thank you, Director Klein. This item shall be withdrawn from the agenda. Moving on to... Oh, we finished our action items. Pretty good. Next order of business is staff reports. We do not have any staff reports tonight. And our next order of business, information item, student trustee updates. Student trustees, please present your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. I don't think we've ever timed anything better in our entire lives. So tonight, I will be presenting our achieving section. So this weekend, the current student trustees and incoming student trustees will have the opportunity to attend AUSTA ACO's annual general meeting in Toronto, so that we leave for on Thursday. We're excited to participate in many presentations and to have the opportunity to connect with student trustees across the province. I myself and my role as VP will be leading three separate sessions for professional development for student trustees. Today, the student trustees have had the opportunity to represent the board at FACE's annual lobby day at Queens Park. It was a great day. I'll share the results with you now, since we're here. It was an amazing event. We were there with other student trustees across the province, and it was really great to be there. And then the most important part of the report, a reminder that Student Senate applications close on May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at two thirty P M, so at the end of the school day. Please share the application information with any high school students you know, grades nine to eleven, who might be interested. Last week, the student trustees filmed a promotional video with information for Senate applications as schools and lead senators are putting up posters and announcements to promote the next year's Senate. The video can be found on our board YouTube channel using the link down below, and I believe, Elizabeth, if it's okay, we can take a look at the video. This video was filmed at STA. It features myself, Brady, and one of our Student Senate members, the Student Council President at STA, Anbui.
Need some help, but, okay.
I'll say the little spiel that I was going to say after the video, but a huge thanks to Rob DeFranco for filming this with us. There were some scheduling conflicts, and it ended up being pretty last minute, and he was amazing. So thanks to him for his help and to the communications team for promoting it with us. We really, really.
Hi, HCDSP. Are you a high school student from grades nine to eleven who wants to build your leadership skills, be a voice for students, and make connections with other students across the school board? Then the Student Senate is for you. Applications for next year's Senate are now open. The Student Senate is a committee designed to establish a student vision for the Halton Catholic District School Board. Its members, student senators, provide a link between student trustees and the remainder of the students in the board. Senators also have the opportunity to self-determine their roles. You may choose to develop initiatives that will promote and develop leadership skills across Halton, get involved with board advocacy, and so much more. As a senator, you will help to push the mission and vision of the Senate to the other students of the Halton Catholic District School Board.
We are looking for hardworking, dedicated, and passionate students from all types of diverse academic, ethnic, and social backgrounds. If you are involved in your school, seeking leadership opportunities, and wishing to share your voices on behalf of your school, then apply.
Application information can be found in your Outlook email or the Senate Instagram or Twitter at HCDSP Senate, or even by talking to your VPs and current senators. We're super excited to welcome all the new senators, and we can't wait to see what's in store for the Senate next year. Make sure you apply today because applications close May nineteenth.
We're very excited about that. We're hoping to get a record amount of Senate applications this year. So again, last week, please do promote it. And they're also linked in the student trustee update is the link to the actual form itself to apply. So please do share that in any avenues, and that goes for everyone here that you can. Thank you.
Perfect. And I will be taking on our believing section. So on Thursday, May fourth, two thousand twenty-three, our Catholic school leaders from all across our board connected with one another for HCDSP's annual journeying with Jesus event. Our secondary students connected with our elementary feeder schools to help our younger students at the HCDSP journey in their own path with Jesus, connecting our Catholic faith and our community with one another. And this year's event was powered by student-led mentorship and leadership from all grade levels, allowing all of our students to connect and learn together. And furthermore, on Wednesday, May third, two thousand twenty-three, students from across Ontario gathered virtually for this year's Ontario Catholic Student Youth Day, an annual event hosted by AUSTA ACO's Catholic Board Council and OCSTA, which was facilitated by myself, Trustee Bowie, and Trustee Kuzma. We had speakers from Development in Peace, Toronto Catholic Leadership, Catholic Butcher Ontario, and OCSTA. We learned about Catholic curriculum, Catholic leadership, and how we are always learners and leaders of Christ.
So I'll be doing the belonging section. So at our Senate meeting on April twenty-seventh, the senators had a lengthy discussion on the similarities and differences between high schools and our board while comparing common positives and negatives present at each of their schools. Many schools highlighted their facilities and the programs available at their schools as being really high positives. For example, they highlighted shisms, AP programs, IB, STEM programs, as well as really good sports programs with amazing coaches and facilities. As well, students shared many positives regarding their relationship with staff members, including teachers, librarians, support staff, and others. Students also spoke really highly of their involvement in extracurriculars and encouragement for student voice and initiatives. There are also some common negatives between all the schools, though. Vaping, bullying, and overpriced cafeteria food being the most common ones. Another large issue was the lack of open cafeterias, as there are multiple schools without open servings at this time. Another issue that was raised was the cleanliness of washrooms, as there were multiple reports of bathroom vandalism, including the absence of soap, toilet paper, and period products. Additionally, some senators brought up the lack of universal bathrooms, along with the point that many students are struggling with mental health issues, engagement, and the school climate. As well, there was just a general consensus that the cafeteria cookies are amazing and everyone loves them. All in all, it was a lengthy discussion with very, very fruitful discussion. And the students said they really appreciated the opportunity to have these in-depth conversations with students from other schools and more just to learn about the neighbors in their HCDSP community. Finally, one of our senators kindly took some photos during the small group discussions, and we wanted to share them with you. So here in the report, if you want to scroll, there's some photos from our meeting at Christ the King. Huge thanks to Unis Soriano from Bishop Reading for her photography skills.
Thank you, student trustees, for your report. Trustees, do we have questions for student trustees? I see Trustee Kennedy, you have your hand up. You're the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Just starting on, on bullying. Do we have any stats or data on that of how that's, is that, is that a downtrend or an uptrend? Is anyone, is anyone can comment on that, regarding bullying?
Director Klein?
I ask Superintendent Cordero if he would have anything at his fingertips on that. Certainly, that is something that is noted.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director Klein, to Trustee Kennedy. Overall, incidents of bullying, as reported and investigated at schools, is slightly lower this year as opposed to last year. However, there are increased numbers of incidents in the South Oakville, South Burlington communities and rise, generally speaking, in the municipalities of Oakville and Burlington, but a decline in incidents in Milton and Halton Hills, that the decrease there overweighs or outweighs the slight rise in the Burlington and Milton or Oakville communities.
Trustee Kennedy? Do you have a follow-up? Okay.
Just wondering, through you, Mr. Chair, to Trustee Kuzma. You said many students are struggling with mental health issues. I know we did get some extra funding from the ministry this summer, a hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred dollars, so that mental health programs can be available throughout the summer. There's a continuation. Do students know about this? Has it been disseminated to them?
Director Klein?
I'm going to look at Superintendent Loffs and Superintendent Rossini on that in terms of the, the monies for this coming summer, whether or not that they're... Well, I don't think we have them right now, and whether or not that's been articulated and communicated widely, and how exactly that would manifest itself. So I'll start maybe with Superintendent Loffs.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Director Klein. The funding is, might not be present, but it's coming. So it's not as if we, it's a receivable that I anticipate will be received. So I'm not concerned about it not being received. So as far as the execution of it, might have to defer to my colleague if I could.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I do know that once we get confirmation of the funding and the details about where the funding can be applied, staff is already beginning to put together, to put together some posting for the summer supports and looking to align what we offer with what the community might be offering in, in terms of summer supports for mental health. For example, Rock, Reach Out Center for Kids, and our co-terminist board. So we are almost at the ready, once we get the details around that finding, to be able to develop that posting.
Thank you. Trustee Ohan Chanada, you have your hand up. You're the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Student trustee Bowie, lobby day. It sounds like it was a great day. I saw some posts, but maybe for those maybe listening, could you just elaborate on what that actually is?
Trustee Bowie?
Yeah, of course. So I was actually one of the coordinators of the event from the student level. And basically, we went and joined multiple Catholic education partners. There were teachers there, there was administrators there, trustees and representatives from those associations there, basically to celebrate Catholic education and, you know, advocate for all of the good that's in our system. So I know we were there as part of the reception to, you know, share some success stories coming from students, and it was a great day. We were also, in the afternoon, we got a tour of Queens Park and a tour of U of T. So it was a good day for us, and we learned a lot.
Thank you. Trustee Ohan Chanada?
No, thank you. Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I do not see any other hands up there, so we shall move on to the next information item. Directors, once again, thank you, student trustees, for presenting your report. I forgot to say that. And next up is director's report. Director Klein, please present your report.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just... Oh, perfect. So there's a fairly brief report here to highlight some of the events over the last couple of weeks, and we'd be more than happy to take questions subsequent to that. Looking under achieving, reading support document for parents. Forgive me, I wanted to have a hyperlink to that, and I, I didn't have that, but we do, would have that available for trustees. In believing Catholic Educational Leadership Program, Institute for Catholic Education, or ICE Symposium that came up recently. In fact, there was a, noted yesterday in a CPIC report. And in terms of belonging, the Parent and Caregiver Symposium that is coming up. Reading support document for parents, early literacy and literacy for our students is something that is not restricted to the support from teachers and ECEs and EAs and other educators. We've created a resource to help families support children in the development of the five pillars of reading, and they are their phonological and phonemic awareness, phonics themselves, fluency, then that ability to read with a facility, vocabulary, and comprehension, of course. And these booklets will be shared with parents as needed, and there's links to them as well, so parents don't necessarily need hard copies. They can have links that they can use on, on their electronic devices as well. And that would be going through the schools themselves, through principals. And we'll be able to share a link with that, for that with you. An addition or an adjunct to the report that came two weeks ago in terms of our ongoing efforts to form leaders, HCDSP educators who are interested in developing their knowledge, practices, and skills in Catholic educational leadership are invited to apply to be part of the upcoming twenty-three, twenty-four Catholic Leadership Program. It's an information session that will be held in June, mid-June fifteenth, and participants will be selected by September. Catholic Educational Leadership Program is rooted in the Catholic, Ontario Catholic Leadership Framework. There is a framework for educational leadership in Ontario through the Institute for Catholic Educate, or for Educational Leadership, and Catholic schools have years ago worked to create one that has a, the ethos of our Catholic beliefs within it. And that identifies and explores five domains in Catholic school leadership, and they are as follows. The ability for someone to set direction for a school or a system, build relationships and develop people, develop the organization itself, of course, improve instructional practices, and the heart of what schools do, securing accountability, and that is part of that program, which is a two-year program, I think takes about thirty candidates. Institute for Catholic Education, some of you here were at that last week for, I think, the first time in about three years. ICE has been able to have a symposium put together. There were many, many people representing stakeholders who were trustees, students, senior leaders, teachers, and students, of course, and of course, a lot of clergy were present as well. And I think it was noted at CPIC yesterday that we had the Archbishop, of course, lead us in mass as well. And I think I've seen more of him in the last three weeks than, than some of my family. And he's certainly engaging and certainly committed. And he's certainly engaging and certainly committed to Catholic schools in Ontario, I think, as he gets to know the different culture here in Ontario, having been in Quebec for most of his years. The symposium was entitled "On the Way," or in French, "En chemin", and it offered the opportunity to explore models of ongoing faith formation. Dr. Jill Goudy was someone who helped lead us through a lot of our learning there in terms of what the aspects of Catholic schools are in terms of formation. And three teams from this board presented there as well in various ways, the HCDSB Fosters Adult Faith Formation. Parent and Caregiver Symposium will be hosting a virtual Parent and Caregiver Symposium on May the thirtieth from six thirty to eight P M, perhaps as kids are going to bed. The session will be led by Dr. Anne Lopez, and Anne has had some impact here in terms of building up capacity here with regard to equity, inclusion. And she is a great speaker and presenter, and she's from OIC, or the Ontario Institute for Studies in Education at the University of Toronto. Dr. Lopez will engage families on how educators and communities can work together to ensure our schools or spaces where all students can thrive. Very good speaker, and I would encourage people to take advantage of that. So very briefly, just an example, sort of top of the list of some pretty awesome things that are happening at the school board in various levels, and be happy to take any questions at this point.
Thank you, Director Klein. Trustees, do we have questions? For Director Klein, I see one hand up. Trustee Kennedy, your hand is up. You're the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, and to Director Klein. For the Catholic Educational Leadership Program, do all that are applied accepted, or is it a specific amount? What's our take up rate right now for the teachers we have? Is there a certain percentage of teachers we have that have this program, like completed?
Director Klein?
Good question. I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Nar, who is shepherding that program.
Thank you, and through you, Chair. So we have approximately seventy-five or seventy-six in the program right now, the two-year program. And that's for academic staff, so that would be for staff that are looking to go on to roles. That would be consultant roles, department head roles, principal, vice principal roles. So it's a requirement that they have that program, so seventy-five to eighty. And I think it's a fairly even split between year one and year two, because it's a two-year program. So we'll graduate out about forty people, and we'll see what the uptake is for next year, but it's generally around that forty number, so.
Thank you. Trustee Kennedy, you have a follow-up question?
So you might have answered my question, who shepherds the program. I think you said that term. So Superintendent Nar leads the program. That was my next question, but I think, yeah.
Yes, so we have a team effort. So we have a leadership steering committee, and it's made up of a number of principals across our system in both elementary and secondary, and then our academic superintendents as well. And so one of the features of the program is a, I guess you would call it a mentoring group feature. So each participant in the program is given a leadership team as a mentor. So it would be an elementary and a secondary administrator, along with one of the senior staff. And they meet with that person individually at the beginning of the program. So we call them entrance conversations, talk about their journey, talk about where they're at in their journey, and then any of the things that we could be pointing them to, to help them get some experience. And then they go through the two-year program, but after each of our larger full group sessions, they have an hour with that team. So the small mentoring group has an hour with the team to go through some reflection pieces. And then at the end of the two-year program, we have what we call an exit conversation, where that person then meets with the team that they were with for the two years to talk about what's their next steps, what's their goals, are they thinking about leadership right away? Are they waiting a little bit? And to help counsel them into the next stages. And then in the last two years, we've recently introduced a program, which is sort of a follow-up optional program for people that have finished the leadership program, but maybe have not yet gone on to formal leadership roles. And that's called Rekindling Mission: Wholehearted Leadership. And that's a program where we roughly have about twenty to twenty-five participants, for the last two years anyway, in the program over the course of the year that seeks to really develop sort of faith formation alongside of leadership and that call to service and vocation in Catholic education.
Thank you. Superintendent Nar, do you have any other?
It just sounds really interesting. I wonder if it would be worthwhile one day to have someone do a report on how successful or their experience. It just sounds interesting. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Up next, trustee Carabella, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a question about the same program, and I think you've answered it, though. Is the completion rate, would it be everyone who starts it? Do they finish it?
I would say for the most part, unless some... Oh, sorry, through you, Chair. I would say that for the most part, yes, they do complete it. Some might drop out for family reasons or whatnot throughout, and then come back. And sometimes we will pause there if they're halfway through the two-year program. We might pause it and then bring them back in a couple of years if that's what they needed, but for the most part, they do.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Follow-up? Okay. Thank you, Director Klein, for your report. And with that, we shall move on to item eleven point three, information item. Attendance at the two thousand and twenty-three American Research Association Meeting. Dr. Colimer, please present your report.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. This report is linked to our strategic priority of foundational elements, and it provides a summary of my attendance at the American meeting of the American Educational Research Conference. AERA supports the dissemination and practical application of educational research results. And its mission is really to encourage scholarly inquiry related to education and to encourage the use of research to improve education and education policy. This annual meeting this past year was held in Chicago, and it was the first place-based conference in a number of years. And its theme was "Interrogating Consequential Educational Research in Pursuit of Truth." It was a pretty comprehensive program, and they had presidential speakers, special interest groups, roundtable presentations, posters. There was PD, and I really focused on attending the sessions that aligned with our board's priorities, our mission, vision, and values. So sessions that covered Catholic education, equity and inclusion, achievement with respect to mathematics and reading, and mental health and well-being. And I also focused on foundational elements, things that related to educational research methodology, evaluation, assessments in schools. All of the sessions were quite interactive. Given that there was so much to potentially attend, I really focused on sessions where there were multiple speakers so that I can get the most out of the four days. So I was able to answer, ask questions, share some of the research activities that we do here at our board, and build connections with other researchers, other board researchers, and just other university-level researchers. So I was very inspired by all that I learned. Thank you to Director Klein for allowing me the opportunity to go. And the knowledge that I gained at the sessions has been brought back, and we continue to share it in the research team. And it's really our goal to use that knowledge in the work that we do here while we collect data for the board. Thanks. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Colimer. Trustees, do we have questions? Dr. Colimer? No questions. So thank you, Dr. Colimer, for your report, which is appreciated. We shall now move on to the next information item is construction report. Superintendent Merrick, please present your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, we have the construction report for May. First up, in the photos there, you can see Milton Number Three Catholic Secondary School. So making great progress on this one. It's moving along pretty quickly. You can still see that steel erection has begun. We have some slab on grade being poured. And actually, today onsite, it's not shown in the photos here because we missed the deadline for the photos. But today, we had the precast for the first floor, so the precast slabs went down for the classroom wing. So starting next week, we're on to the second floor and doing the masonry on the second floor. On the next project, we have Milton Number Nine. A little slow going here. The site is extremely muddy, and the conditions in the last probably four to six weeks have been really tough, but it's starting to dry out now. We're back onsite doing masonry, slab on grade, and starting in-wall services in the next few weeks here as well. And then lastly, we have Oakville Number Four. Still early on in this project. As you can see, the footings and foundations taking place. We're almost wrapping up on those, and we'll be on to site grading and then starting with the above-ground masonry in the next month. So three projects moving along very well, especially happy with the progress on Milton Number Three in Milton, which is very, very badly needed. So happy to take any questions from trustees on those three projects.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Trustees, any questions? I see trustee Carabella. You have your hand up. You're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a question, just a comment that we had the Oak Ground blessing at Oakville Number Four, and it was attended by Minister Leche. We had the MPPs, we had trustees, and it was just great to see how quickly that's coming along, even just the picture now since that few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Trustees, any other questions or comments for Superintendent Merrick? Seeing none. Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. We shall move on down the agenda. To our next order of business would be the open question period. I need Director Klein here for this item. So last trustees to stand at ease while Director Klein gets back. Thank you. Director Klein, you're just in time. Open question. Open question period. Do we have any questions submitted, and can I have a look at the question? Director Klein?
Sure. First of all, in rehearsal, that went another ten minutes, your report, so I'm a little disappointed.
Do we have a question submitted, Director Klein?
We do, in fact, Chair. And the question is...
Oh, it's emailed to me. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So let me take a look at this. Trustees, please stand at ease once again. Thank you, Director Klein. You see the question there. My question to you is that can this be answered, or can this be... Are you in a position to answer the question, or would you like to respond later?
I think this would be worth responding to later. It does connect with some of the conversation we had a little earlier. So I need some time to ponder this and see how it connects with some of the conversation we had earlier, which is interesting. Did you want me to?
So we can read the question, and we will get back to the responder through email, and it will be included in the next board meeting package. So Director Klein, please read the question.
So the question reads as follows, and it came in about fifteen minutes before the meeting began. On April the sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, the HCDSB CPIC unanimously passed a resolution entitled Advisory Authority of School Councils and Duty to Respond, which made a recommendation regarding the board's requirement to respond to school council recommendations as per Regulation six, twelve, zero, zero of the Education Act. Following a lack of action, including no response to CPIC regarding its recommendation... Did I say the name? Maria Lorenko, the sponsor of the motion, presented a delegation on the matter at the June seventh board meeting. I'm assuming that's two thousand and twenty-two, at which time the matter was referred to Policy Committee. Almost a year later, and more than a year since the original CPIC motion, why has there still been no resolution on this matter and no response to CPIC?
Thank you, Director Klein. You're correct. This has relevance to what I discussed earlier. We don't have a written response. A written response shall be provided to the questioner, and it shall be included in the next board meeting package. So with that, our next order of business is in camera.
Sorry, Chair, I just had a quick question.
Sure.
Yeah. So through you to Director Klein. Director Klein, we received some question, I guess, from the union just asking about supplies in schools.
So trustee Sanders, yeah, trustee Sanders. Open question period is specifically defined in our bylaws. It's questions from the rapier's either sitting here. Actually, it's for it we're sitting here, but there's a discrepancy in our bylaws the way it is. And so we entertain questions coming by email, and there's a specific guidelines to what those questions can be. And it's defined there in the bylaws. It says questions of certain nature cannot be entertained. And I think we're getting into that area now with you trying to ask the questions. We cannot get there. So these are rapier questions, stakeholder questions who ask the question.
Okay, sir. Can you sort of direct me to the...
Yeah, so it's open question period, bylaw number thirteen, and requirements, look at requirements. And item thirteen point six talks about out-of-order questions.
Thirteen point six, sorry.
Thirteen point six, questions concerning the character performance of named individuals of positions identified, student, teacher, staff, citizens, or trustees shall be ruled out of order and shall not be considered by the board. So these are basically rapier questions and not trustee questions at this point in time.
Okay. Well, that's not what I was going to ask about the character of anybody.
So the open question period, the open question period as per the order of business is questions to be entertained. The chair may recognize by... So this is bylaw nine point five, number nine point five fourteen, open question period. The chair may recognize a member of the public in attendance of the meeting, not trustees. Before article thirteen of this bylaw, so an article thirteen defines how it is. So a member of the public, this is not an open question period for trustees.
Okay, sorry. I thought we'd done this before, like we've had questions from trustees.
No, not here at this point. So if you want to get a question in at the approval of the agenda, you would ask for an item to be added, and then you would get it discussed, not in the open question period.
Okay, yeah, I'm almost certain that we've done this before. We just had open question.
I snuck one in, but it was sneaky.
At that point, the trustees, Kennedy remembers how it's done.
Right.
So this is open question period for rapiers. Sorry, trustee Sanders. With this, we shall have to go in camera, and let's go back to the in-camera item. And with that, I'll need a motion to go back in camera. So may I have a mover? Trustee Carabella moves?
I can second.
One second. Yeah. Once you take the vote, then we'll go in camera and clear up everybody. No, we can... Trustee Carabella moves. Looking for a second. To go into camera. Trustee Powell, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Let's take a brief pause, and let me just try to put my paperwork...